Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdallah.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Melonowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
He left.
He's ill.
He was ill and he told me that he was leaving.
Councilman Muscat is absent. Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight, I'd like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have approval of the agenda. Madam Chairwoman.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. I move to approve the Order of Business, April 10th, 2018, regular meeting of Deveron Heights City Council with the addition of items 11B and 11C as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Chair, for the agenda, there's item 613. Again, you know, this is for the sewage cleaning.
Okay.
I want to see if we can, I'm not ready to vote on this tonight because we keep spending the same amount of money in at $20,000,000 and we haven't gotten anything back as to the same locations being spent the money on. Who's doing, who's doing, if there's dumping anything, we need to find out.
You need to find the cost.
Yeah, we're in the 21st century. We should find out. I mean, there's cameras that we can find out who's dumping it. So, we keep paying this money and I don't feel comfortable voting on it today. I think we should pull it to, put it to a study session.
Okay.
Item 613.
613?
Yeah, make a motion to support us as well.
Madam Chair, you would pull that at the time when you do the current claims?
When we do current claims, we can pull it.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda, we have approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 27th, 2018.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that the minutes from the regular meeting of March 27th, 2018, attached as 4A be approved.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdella. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion's carried. Next on the agenda, we have fund transfers and current claims. Councilman Bazey, you wanted to pull?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
You got a motion to submit.
We need to go back to public comments, don't we?
Yeah.
Yes, we would open up for anything that's on the agenda.
Oh, that's true. All right. Public hearings and comments on agenda items, please limit it to two minutes. Step to the podium and identify yourself, please.
Zohair Abdulha, Dear Deveron Heights. I want to talk about the budget, which is proposed for public hearing. I really would think it would be beneficial to everybody, including the city council and the residents, if we can have copy of the budget available at least at the counter at the clerk's office and we can write on it. It's a proposed, it's not final, so there is no confusion, you know, that it's final or it is going to be changed. The second thing on the budget, I really would like to see transparency in the budget, how it is laid out. Every department should have, you know, each person, what's their salary, what they make and what's their fringe benefits. So, we know exactly where the money is going. Like, the water budget should be clear, each item where it is going and what it's used for.
Understood.
I would like to see some transparency on this budget. And the third thing, the proposed increases in salaries. I like to compare apple to apple, not apple to, you know, oranges. Deveron is 100,000 people. They have lots of industrial businesses. The salaries there really do not reflect the duty of the people who are working here. And there are some people who signed, to my understanding, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, they signed letter of understanding that they will continue working at specific salary and they will not accept any increase and they pulled their pension. So, I would like you to think about that.
Okay.
If they signed something and promised something, I'd like them to keep that promise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on. Next on the agenda is fund transfers and current claims.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
I move that current claims 61 through 630 is outlined in item number 6 be approved.
Support.
Supported by?
Have these questions and?
Yeah, supported by Councilman Abdella and Councilman Bazey. Did you want to pull that 613?
Yeah, I'd like to pull 613 and move it to a study session so we can find out what's being done. And, you know, again, we're, I've been doing a lot of research on various cities and when they go around, they're going to different locations and it's, we're going to the same location, we're cleaning the same location. Since I've been on the council since January, I've seen it many, many times. So, I'd like to find out what's being done before we approve another one of these sewage cleaning, the same location, I would say.
Okay. Is there any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton.
Three things.
Okay.
Item 62 for Director Zimmer, I imagine this is water main breaks for the sand and soil. And my question is, can you share with us how many water main breaks we've had year to date for, so we can let our residents know what we're dealing with?
I have that number with me. Actually, the last time I checked, the first couple of months of this new year, we were up around 150, between 150 and 200.
Okay, all right.
That's not including the service leaks, broken pipes in houses that are unattended. People leave a vacant house and don't turn the heat up or turn the heat down, broken pipes, things of that nature.
Thank you. Thank you. I think it's good for residents to know what we're talking about when we talk about the infrastructure challenges of an aging community. I appreciate the information. Item 64, Director Hashem. I'm excited to see this, by the way. I'm happy I would, it looks like Parkland Park, the ADA compliant restroom comfort stations are ready, finished?
It looked like it, we went on a visit today.
It's not.
If I can pass it on to Director Gribble.
Okay.
He would have more information on this one.
All right. And then I do have a question. Director Gribble, I can direct it to you as well, or maybe it will fall on Director Zimmer. Have we added a pathway to the restrooms? Because I know that was problematic for people who are wheelchair-bound because there wasn't, there's a path to the pavilion, which is a little rough, but there wasn't a path to the bathrooms.
Yeah, I'd like to assist to Director Gribble.
Yeah, as of right now, the project is not completed. They're just starting to work on the interior with the fixtures and installing. But, as part of the restoration, there will be a pathway from the pavilion. It will be smooth and it's required by ADA and there will be equal opportunity for everyone to be able to use the restrooms.
Okay. Do you know if that will include the paths, pathway, though? Because I don't know if that was included in the project or not.
I don't believe that would include the pathway. We'll have to look at that. But as long as we have some access to it, we're covered under ADA. I know what the area you're talking about is coming directly off the walkway. And yes, that, I want to get that taken care of, too.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. Thank you, Directors. And then, the last item I have is 617. This is probably more for Comptroller Vance. I know it's Director Zimmer's. But, taking out a water fund, oh wait, I'm sorry, it's the wrong thing. I was looking, no, it is. It says auto parts, but I thought it was fuel. Oh, it's lube fuel. You know, this is a general purchase order, correct? Is that, and is that not limited to water project vehicles? Is this something, I guess my question was about seeing those chargebacks. We had talked about that previously and seeing a report for that. Because we use those blanket purchase orders and we're putting everything in the water, paying it out of Water Department, but we know there's the back end transfers, chargebacks, but we're not, City Council's not seeing those. And we had talked about seeing a report. And is that something that will be forthcoming soon?
I sent that report out the day after the last board meeting and I got responses from about half the board members. They're now looking that they received it. So, I did comply with asking the question and I'm trying to continue the conversation.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two more.
Councilman Bazey.
I have actually two more questions. We have 621. It says services rendered for $4,420, it says 53% of the work done, but there's no invoice. What is this?
620?
Yep, 621.
621, Wade Trim.
Yep.
Go ahead.
This is a partial bill that we received from Wade Trim. They're working on our procedural manual and they have done, we pay them certain percentages as they finish the work. So, it came from the block grant. It's to do the procedural manual.
Should it be on here, though, to state that what they're doing and maybe attach an invoice to it as to?
We have the invoice. I'm not sure why it's not attached.
Well, there is a invoice attached.
There should be an invoice and it should say.
Well, it says 2018 Annual Action Plan slash ER.
So, that's for work that Wade Trim had done for us so far this year.
Okay.
Pay him as a welcome progress.
Okay, thank you. The second one, 627, this is Plant Moran. There's three entries for $10,000 consulting fee. I take it. Is that a monthly, is that going to be on a monthly basis from September to November? You got 20, 2017, $10,000 each. Then also, the other question is, you got an expense, I don't know why, there's an additional expense of $907.46 for expenses if they're already charging you for the consulting fee.
This, this is an agreement before you came on the council dealing with the golf course purchase, I think. Am I correct in that?
Yeah.
So, it was, it was agreed to pay them in monthly segments for their work.
Okay, so is it done, though? So, November was the last month?
Yeah.
So, it's, we're good?
I've not called them for anything, or is it?
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion?
Just, because right now, you have a motion on the floor.
Correct.
To support everything that's in the packet, to revisit what Councilman Bazey stated, there would need to either be an amendment to remove that item by the maker and the supporter, or you take the vote and see where the motion falls.
Yeah, Madam Chair, and this is a question, I guess, for Bill Zimmer, the mayor. So, what happens if we just don't pay this 613? I mean, we've had discussion. It's a shame that Councilman Muscat isn't here because he's talked a lot about this and about the new system and the grease traps and, but what happens if we don't, if we don't pay this claim?
So, we can verify what's going on? Is it not being cleaned all the way or?
The work has already been performed, so, I really don't have an answer for that.
Well, I think the real risk is, to be honest with you, some households might be in risk of basement flooding if it clogs and it's not cleaned. It's, it's, it's almost like preventative maintenance and that's why we've continued in, in spending the money. I understand your frustration, but that, that's preventative maintenance and those are the areas, I think.
I can elaborate a little bit. These are definitely the problem areas. They're not the only areas that do get serviced. Every year, we submit a report to DEQ regarding sanitary sewer maintenance and it's a requirement by the DEQ. And the ordinance department and I, and I've talked to our engineer, we're going to try to put something together to help with your understanding. As you mentioned, it is very difficult to find the actual source from some of these discharges. They could be household, they could be business. So, I mean, I know that we do televise a lot of the sewers as well. We do our best to try to find out where the actual issue is coming from. We do get with the ordinance department quite frequently, ask them to look at some of the problem areas. I understand your frustration as well.
Right.
It's going to take some time for us to really get a handle on the grease ordinance side of it.
I've got a question. When they're cleaning out the sewer, are they following behind with the camera to make sure they have cleared it completely? Because you can clear just the center part, just enough to get the water flowing again and it backs up again and you got the same problem. Are we making sure with the camera following through that they are cleaning it completely?
We're also in the process of putting together a disc for the council that you'd be able to identify the exact locations of each of these structures. When they do clean a service or sewer line, they'll go from one structure to another and they'll make an inspection at both points.
Right, but they're not doing it with a camera at all?
They will, if necessary, yes.
Because?
A lot of times, it's obvious once the blockage has moved on and gone out to the main sewer.
Right, and I understand it, but sometimes, they don't completely clear out the blockage and they have no way of knowing until they follow through with the camera to make sure it's, you know, like I said, it's a clogged drain. You get it moving enough and that's good, but it could clog the next week because it's still kind of weak. It's not completely clear from side to side.
Yeah, we do televise and we also do cutting. We have cutting devices that are also sent through the sewers as needed.
Okay.
What's a typical way they clean it? Just with water pressure?
Water pressure, yes. The jet truck is what we call them. It has nozzles that spray backwards and nozzle that sprays forward to move the pipe through the sewer, I mean, the, to, through the sewer.
Mayor or Director Zimmer, do you know, are there late fees or are there any, if it's not paid? The work's been done at the city's direction, correct?
Yes, yes.
Maybe we need to move this to a study session, see what other alternatives we could look at to make sure we, to see if we can help reduce.
May I make a comment, though? And I do hear what you're saying, Councilman Bazey, where I think we're all frustrated because we see this over and over and over again. In all fairness, though, I think it's more of a city issue that we face because of what's being dumped or whatever, where it's not really a company, this company's issue, per se. As long as they're following your directive.
They are and the majority of those locations are revisited because the problems dictate the frequency of our visits to those locations. Sometimes, we may go back to a sewer, pop the lid and find out there, there's no problem there. So, no service will be performed. But these are the problem areas that require frequent cleaning. And as the mayor said, the consequences are backed-up basements, flood claims.
Sure.
If I could just say one thing, we are working on getting something that we can, we can present to you. You know, one of the things that, some of it was just best guessing at where some of this is coming from. One in particular was a business near Joy and Beach Daily. We were, we were certain it was coming from a particular business. And then we found out just recently that another business in that strip had a grease trap that had never been cleaned. So, now we've got them on board. So, what I've talked to Bill Zimmer about and to Dan Brooks and have had discussions with the mayor about is, I'd like to put something together. We're, we're going to try to put something together for you so you can see where we're focusing our attention on. A lot of the businesses are complying. They're, they're getting their grease interceptors cleaned out, their grease traps cleaned out and they're following the ordinance. We're finding that some businesses, even the, a couple of the companies, we've gotten to know the companies that come into the city really well. One in particular is Great Lakes Vacuum. And he's actually contacted me and said, you know, you might have to tweak your ordinance a little bit because some of these newer restaurants in particular have much more sophisticated systems where they're not going to require a minimum six times a year cleanup. So, we're looking at that, too. So, I would ask that you, since, I agree that the service has already been done, we are, we are working diligently at putting something together that we can present to you. And I'm hoping, our goal is to have that by the end of next month, to be able to present that. We're going to try to get as much information together for you as possible so you can see exactly what we're, what we're up against, so.
And like I was saying earlier, you know, I've been looking at, talking to adjacent communities, you know, they, they've been using other companies, not this one in particular. And it seems like they're more sophisticated, you know, with their equipment and also with being able to take pictures of before and after, as the council chair was mentioning.
Yeah, because I've.
And we don't see anything. I mean, since I've been, in January, I've not seen anything other than these $22,000, $25,000, like every other week, seems like that we're approving. I mean, that's, you know, you're talking over $300,000 to $400,000 a year.
And like I said, I know for a fact, because I did talk to a couple of companies, that if they don't clean it out completely, it can block up a lot quicker the second time. So, we need to make sure it's clean when it's done, if we're paying this money. We might have to pay it a little bit more, but it'll give us the security of knowing that that is totally gone and cleaned out.
Madam Chair, I mean, maybe we can talk about assessing the offenders, if we find out who they are, some of the bill.
We've been doing that. I mean, we've been.
With the camera, we can pinpoint exactly where they're at.
Yeah. The, the, from an ordinance standpoint, if they don't comply, and we're talking just really businesses at this point, if they don't comply, they're issued a ticket, the first fine is $500, it goes up to $1,000 and then $1,500 if it's a third offense in one year, so.
We got, we got nine of them gone, too. We have one episode that's been back.
Yeah, but what is, okay, for, okay, so the fine, the first offense is 500 bucks, okay, for that person to put a grease trap, you know, how much does that cost that business? So, is it more feasible for that person to get a ticket, pay the fine than to put a grease trap?
They, it's almost expected that they're going to have a grease trap in there. It wouldn't, it wouldn't be approved. If they have more than a one sink operation and then their back room, it's going to be required.
Okay.
I mean, I don't have a problem approving it. It just, you know, it's frustrating, you know, approving it every, I mean, I don't mind approving it this time, but, you know, for, we need to get more data for the next.
We agree. We agree. And one of the things that I found that was more interesting is, as we're getting, meeting a lot more of these businesses that have the grease traps and we're doing business with them, so to speak, we're finding that a lot of them are complying and they've already been doing this for a long time. I can, I can give you, you know, tell you a dozen of them right now that have been already doing this. So, the data we need to look at with Dan Brooks and with Bill Zimmer is, how many of these are connected? At some point, is this also residential? That's my guess, is that a lot of this is, you know, residential also has a big influence on this and so, we have to look at that. If we can pinpoint, like you said, the specific areas and then we know that the areas, or the businesses in those areas are, are complying with our ordinance, then we have to look at potentially more of a residential risk here than, than commercial.
Thank you. So, I'll amend my motion that we approve claim 61 through 630, but we have a study session as soon as possible on this recurring issue. The company we're using, are they being effective? Is there cheaper, as Councilman Bazey suggested?
Okay, is there any other discussion?
So, it's amended. You need a second to support that? Steve?
Well, I second, it's not really amended. I mean, all, all he's asked for is for just a study session.
Yes.
Because it's approving it as, yeah, just, just requesting a study session.
Should we do it right?
Okay. All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carries. Next, we have, let's check where we're at.
Seven names.
Okay, consideration of bids from CEDD Director Hatchem, return of bid bonds for the CDBG FY 2016 Berwin Center Improvements Phase Two Window Replacement Project.
Madam Chair.
Council.
Ladies first. Ladies first.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Let you do it. It's all right. It's all good.
There's my lady.
Oh, thank you. You're very polite.
Okay.
All right. Madam Chair, thank you and thank you and Councilman Abdella. I move City Council authorize the Comptroller's Office to return all bid bonds to all bidders for the Community Development Block Grant FY 2016 Berwin Center Improvements Phase Two Window Replacement Project as outlined in 7A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdella. Any discussion? I'd like to say, as a member of the Berwin Center, those windows are wonderful. They used to leak before. These new windows just make it so much more comfortable inside the building. With the cold, you can't feel the breeze coming through anymore. So, it really did its job. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports from the mayor. Cummings, McClory, Davis and Aco invoices.
We're not, we're not concurring with this one.
Well, we, we, I think the mayor is asking us to pay these invoices, these two invoices.
Right. Which we discussed last.
So, it would require a motion to do so.
Okay. Okay, Madam Chair, I.
Councilman Abdella.
I motion and we concur with Mayor Dan Pletko. For the council meeting held on Tuesday, April 3rd, attached are the two invoices from Cummings, McClory, Davis and Aco. The one invoice was adjusted for partial payment, approved at the March 27th, 2018. Regular city council meeting is outlined in item 8A.
Second. Seconded by Councilman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion is carried. Next, we have reports from city officials. City Clerk Praschevitz, note of public hearing for proposed 2018-2019 corporate fund budget.
I move that we receive note and file, the communication from our city clerk, Walter Praschevitz, for the public hearings for the 2018-2019 corporate fund budget is outlined in item 9A.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdella.
Yeah, I'm sure if that's, you want, you can talk about clerk, but just to mention maybe the residents, I assume it's okay to say what we talked about in the email, that the budget is available for residents that do want to see it. Is that correct?
As soon as I get the revisions today and we put it together, there will be a copy on file at the clerk's office for examining.
Great, thank you.
Would that be on line two?
That's up to the administration if they.
On line, you'd have to continuously change it. I don't know if that's what you guys, is that what you guys want to do?
That's been the big question, is like, as changes are made, who is going to do that? To put it initially on, I don't have any problem with that, but I don't want to mislead people.
Changes may happen, yeah.
That will say, well, wait a minute, that was different from what was passed.
Mr. Mayor, what if we were to post one that just says this is the initial proposed budget?
Come to City Hall if you want to see the current one.
And come to City Hall or watch city council meeting and see, well, not meeting, actually, meetings of the budget, to see what changes there are. And then the final one will be resubmitted or reposted at whatever date it happens to be. Because it's not, it's not fair, honestly, to the admins to continuously change it nonstop the whole time.
Madam Chair.
Council.
By state law, so our last year's budget that was passed is there and posted. By state law, so our last year's budget that was passed is there and posted. So, it might be confusing to people. That's the only problem.
Well, I think that's one of the things that the city clerk wants. He wants not just a received note and file, you need this to be approved for their schedule. Is that correct?
This, this resolution needs to be approved. On the, on the second page, when you see the notice of public hearing, it says, this notice will be posted on the Internet after approval and by direction of the city council and under by the virtue of the city clerk.
So, the motion probably should be to approve the resolution that is part of Item 9A.
Yeah, that's why I was waiting.
I amend my motion to pass the resolution attached on the back of Item 9A.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair. So, just for clarification, are we all on board that the clerk will put up the proposed budget, and then at the end, when we get the final approved budget, you'll post that again?
The budget is normally-
Or something, maybe administration.
He's going to keep it up to date in his office.
My only concern is as long as the residents have access to it in one form or another.
The budget is normally posted on the front page of our webpage, which I do not maintain.
I think it's more our responsibility than this.
Right, but do you plan on putting in the proposed budget?
I'll put it in, but we're going to have a disclaimer on it that-
Right, of course.
What was written on April 10th.
And for the latest version, please come into the actual City Hall to check to see if there's any changes.
Well, I don't know that that's accurate, because you're not going to keep control of the changes. And the other problem is, I mentioned, I think I mentioned, or maybe I didn't, you've got to be very careful. And I had a disclaimer, I don't remember if Adam Deta, you may have actually written it, but he did a disclaimer for me in keeping with the open meetings.
1989 or something?
Yeah, and I used to read it, that as council chairman, if you watch council members, like, change particular line items in the budget, it was to, something to the words of the effect that it was to gain consensus, but was not an actual motion of substance. Because I was warned that you had to be careful in how to do it. So, I used to read that at the beginning of every meeting. I don't have that anymore. I had it years ago, but it was written by an attorney for me.
Yeah, and I, and I don't recall that specifically, but I understand that, because it's important to make sure that any decision that ends up being made is made in public meeting with the, with all the members of the council here, so.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we have 9C.
9B.
I'm sorry.
9B.
That's the window replacement.
This is the expenditure of $11,000. So, it's a change order.
Change order for the open windows.
Oh, 9B, C E D D Director Hatcham, C D B G F Y 2016 Berwin Center Phase Two Window Replacement Project Change Order Request.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. Madam Chair, I move the City Council approve the attached change order request from Dynamic Glazing Systems, Inc. The amount is $11,000, and this is for fiscal year 2016, Community Development Block Grant Projects Berwin Improvements Phase Two Window Installment Project as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We're on to 9C. We have C E D D Director Hatcham, C D B G F Y 2016 Berwin Center Phase Two Window Replacement Project.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Joe Hatcham, Director for Community and Economic Development Department, recommending that the City Council approve the payment of the attached invoice from Dynamic Glazing Systems in the amount of $142,200 for the F Y 2016 C D B G Berwin Improvements Phase Two Window Installation Project, and in addition, authorize the Controller and Treasurer to issue a check and return the check to the C E D D office as outlined in Item 9C.
Support.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next, we have the C E D D Director Hatcham, C D B G Residential Rehabilitation Program, Subordination of Leans Policy Change.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
I move that we concur with Director Joe Hatcham to change the current policy of the Community Development Block Grant, C D B G Residential Rehab Program, in regard to subordination of leans per Council Motion 8-337 is as follows. The city shall subordinate leans only when recommended by HUD-approved foreclosure consultant preventative agency stating that a hardship exists. The recommendation is, the city shall subordinate rehabilitation leans upon request by the homeowner for any reason subject to the following criteria. There is no increase in, to the existence, I'm sorry, to the existing balance, and the homeowner does not take any cash out as a result of the subordination. Number two, the rehabilitation lien does not fall behind any news, any new leans. Example, the lien remains in the same position as originally filed as outlined in Item 9D.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
I'm sorry. Madam Chair, I just want to clarify a little bit, and I had a little discussion, actually, it's probably best that the director clarified a little bit, because I had some questions on it, so just for the residents to clarify, because this is something that's going to matter to them. And by the way, being in that business, I thought this was a great idea, so good job.
Thank you. What I'm, what I'm recommending that we do, currently, when we do a rehabilitation loan, we put a lien on the residents. And we have been getting a lot of calls that people want to refinance their houses. However, they cannot do it because of our lien. They would have to pay us back. With the subordination, we will be able to subordinate our lien, allow the residents, the residents of Dillon Heights who have leans on them from our department, to refinance their houses and get a better interest rate, who are thus not losing any position, or allowing them to take any money out. So, basically, there is no loss to our department or to the city whatsoever. Nothing changes, it just helps the resident to get a better interest rate and refinance their house.
And you mentioned, so long as they don't pull cash out, you said?
Absolutely, and that's, that's a condition.
Right.
So, our priority remains the same.
Our priority, if we're in third lien, we will remain in third position. For example, if we're in second, we remain in second. Nothing changes from the time we filed our original lien, and there's no cash out whatsoever. So, we're not losing anything, we're just-
We're just allowing residents to be able to get a better monthly payment and interest rate, yeah.
The IRS will do the same thing. They'll also-
Good suggestion.
Yeah, I thought that was a very good one on Joe's part. Good job.
If I may just, if I may just go back to Councilwoman Clayton, when she asked me about wait-trim, we procure wait-trim actually to do our city action annual plan. This is a $12,000 procurement, and the answer was the $4,500 as part of that. It is not for the procedural manual, that's something else. So, I'm sorry, I misled you on our-
Thank you for clarifying that.
It's pretty much broken down on the attached-
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. We move on to the next agenda item, Corporation Council Miyaki, Trash Day Parking Signs.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move City Council accept the legal opinions submitted by Corporate Counselor Gary Miyaki and refer to the administration for implementing and posting of the street signs as presented in 9E.
Support.
Support by Councilman Conston? Any discussion?
Yeah.
We should probably, oh, go ahead. I was just going to say, maybe, if the attorney would mind, Gary, would you give us, just for the residents' sake, because they may not have the document in front of us, to tell them what this is and why we are here where we are? Do you want?
Okay, if you want me to. Basically, this was something that was raised last year. The mayor noted that we needed to get an opinion back to this body. And basically, my opinion is that this doesn't violate constitutional due process rights in order to not have the signs posted. However, there is a statutory duty to end up posting. And so, if we're going to end up enforcing that part of our ordinance, then we need to post the signs in order to enforce the trash day parking restrictions contained in the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman-
Do you have any idea how we're going to post the signs, or how frequently, how far apart, or any plan for that yet?
Well, I think that's, that's covered in part in the statute, but it's also, I think, in part something that is administratively done. So, my sense would be that that would be referred to the police department and to the DPW, and then if I need to be consulted at that point, then I'd be consulted. So, in other words, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to your specific question, but my sense is we're going to be needing to figure that out.
I don't want to have signs on, in front of everybody's house or overdo it, but they're looking at where we need to post it to be in compliance. One of the reasons I put this on the agenda is numerous individuals email, call, and say, why are you not enforcing the trash day park, no parking? And so, this will give them an update that we haven't eliminated it, but there was a problem with the posting that we now know about, and we've got to get that changed.
One more thing to add to that. I think it's important to let all the residents know that, you know, obviously, you don't park on the streets on garbage day, but also put your cans up on the grass on the curb, because I witnessed just yesterday, almost an entire block where the cans were in the street, and the street sweepers are ineffective, they can't get next to the curb. So, it's very imperative that they put their cans on the grass off the street completely.
Good point.
Councilman Bazey, do you have anything?
I thought we discussed the signs at the last meeting, that the best or the most effective way is to put them in front of the beginning of neighborhoods or streets instead of like every house. So, if you, if you drive into a subdivision, whatever entrance it is, we would force the sign in the garbage day. I thought that was one of the consensus.
Well, it's, it will be whatever state law says. In other words, whatever, whatever the consensus is, is, the issue is what the state law require,
and that's what we're going to have to do.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next, we're on to 9F. Park and Recreation Director Greible, Budget Transfer Request.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move to concur with Parks and Recreation Director Kenneth Greible's request and approve the budget amendment as submitted in 9F.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next on the agenda is 9G. Park and Recreation Director Greible, Request to Dispose of Equipment.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Conston?
I move we concur with Recreation Director Kenneth Greible and approve the, his request to dispose of the equipment is outlined in 9G.
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, the motion is carried. Next, we have ordinances and resolutions from Corporate, Corporation Council Miyaki, First Reading of Proposed Retirement Plan Appeals Ordinance.
Madam Chair?
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move ordinance H 18-04, be considered read for the first time as outlined in 11A.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Conston? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next on the agenda is ordinance and resolutions, 11B. Bill Bazey will be presenting that.
Lisa's probably going to do it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Lisa's supposed to do.
I do whatever, if you want me to do 11B, you can. It's all good. Go for it.
She's supposed to do 11B.
Yeah.
Yeah, I move the City Council to adopt expansion of the scope and increase the funding for city council expenditure for account, okay, account number 101-101.960.00, and consolidating all city council expenditures under account number 101.101.960.000, imposing all other city council expenditures accounts as outlined in 11B.
Second? Seconded by Councilman Hicks Clayton. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried. Next, we have 11C, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes, thank you. Madam Chair, I move the City Council adopt the resolution. This is for adding two Community Development Block Grant line items to the proposed budget for 1819 as submitted in 11C.
Second?
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdullah?
Since this was added just before our meeting, can we get a, before I vote, I'd like to get a general explanation of that, please?
Synopsis.
Who's, are you the one?
I mean, I can from what I know of it, and then certainly others can chime in. My understanding is, and I, I don't have the block grant budget in front of me, but the, and of course, the coordinators would have to find where that money would come from, but what the resolution is recommending is $30,000 to fund rehabilitation of the baseball fields, in particular, the south end at Swapka Park, because those fields are in dire need. It does mention the north end as well, but they do have to be low mod income areas. And then, an additional $5,000 for the purchase of small garbage cans, and this would be, and again, the City Disability Commission, Commission on Disability Concerns had recommended this a previous year, and that is to fund that purchase for those that are, find it a struggle to deal with the larger canisters with disabilities.
Okay.
And where's this money coming from?
It was in the Vista Maria proposal. They decided, if I'm understanding correctly, to take it and use it for our residents, because they need, this is really important.
So, how much is being taken away? Total Vista Maria, if I'm not mistaken, isn't it about 50-some thousand?
I think it was 35,000.
35,000.
So, you're canceling all of Vista Maria? Just for clarification, can I get it clear?
What is the budget amount?
They're adjusting the budget to eliminate the Vista Maria amount and put 30,000 into rehab of baseball fields at Swapka Park, and 10,000 was for purchases-
5,000.
5,000 for the trash canisters.
5,000 for small garbage cans, which is probably out of order, because you have a person missing, and it should have been on the agenda before.
Yeah, that, you didn't have all of your members here, it's when you ended up doing-
No, point of order, I'd like to refer to the city clerk on that, because I asked that question, by the way, because I was always, under my impression, we'd have everybody, but I was corrected, that it required a form that we have, a majority vote, which we have not voted yet, so.
Okay.
I did check that.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, so, I'll be honest, this is a pet peeve of mine, and I'll just say it publicly. When I get something last second, we were given this just before the council meeting started, and, you know, I'm trying to put all this data together, try to be able to make a vote on this. Ideally, for me, I'd like to have this sent to the next council meeting, where we have an opportunity to be able to look into it and research it. But that being the case, at this point, can you give us, so is Vista Maria's funds eliminated at this point, based on this resolution?
This is the first, this is the first time I hear of this. I was not communicated, no communication was sent to me as far as I was aware.
No one sent to Mayor's office.
I have talked, I have talked previously to Councilman Musket, who asked me to put some money into the parks, which is in the south end right by the RA Young Building. And when we vetted that out, that particular park is not eligible for city block grant money. So, we cannot do that. Now, you may want to remove that item and say, if you vote on it, you don't want to put the money in Vista Maria. put the money in Vista Maria, that's fine, but you cannot tell me where to put the money, because that particular place is not low to moderate income.
Is there any park that is low to moderate?
The only, and I did reply by email, I think, to all city council people, that the only place we can put money in parks at this point is in ADA, and that would be Mr. Grebel, Director Grebel.
What is, okay, so when we talked earlier today, when they went over this map, there was a huge blue area, it says low, I'm sorry, low and moderate income area.
That's not what RA Young Building is, though.
So what's, what's the difference between what's on this map versus?
The blue area is the low to moderate income areas that we can put money into. The RA Young and the park that Mr. Musket mentioned, or Councilman Musket mentioned, does not fall into that area, we're not going to put money there. We, if we put it, eventually the general fund will have to reimburse the federal government for that.
Do we want to just hold this, take it to the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd like to personally put this on hold until, you know, CDBG, the mayor's administration, and even us have had the opportunity to be able to look into what this thing's all about.
Both 11B and 11C.
11B and 11C.
11B has been.
11B, we voted.
So what you can do with C, Madam Chair, is I can change my motion to refer to study session.
Or just put it on the next meeting. Or you can just put it on the next meeting.
Next meeting, then.
Okay, well, we'll just, at this point.
Yeah.
Can I have a courtesy of getting a copy of whatever this was?
Yeah, I thought everybody had it.
You need to fill the administration in, if I did this, you'd be all complaining about transparency, but you guys did it to me, and are constantly doing it. I'm pretty lucky with my packet, and I have Ray's packet, so I'm missing some.
What he wrote all over, Ray was sick.
Yeah, so, so Madam Chair, call the vote, please.
All right, at this time, you want to vote to move it to the next?
Both.
Both?
Just a study session.
No, just 11C, we already voted on.
11C, we'll move it to the next meeting.
But also in addition to that, doesn't CDBG have to look into this, if this is even a possibility to be able to put out this expenditure?
That's, that's what we're going to.
And then at that particular point, they got to come and present to us again.
They have to make sure it meets the qualifications that fall under using HUD money.
So I don't know if we're ready to commit to the next meeting, per se.
Yes.
Councilman, we already, I already sent an email to all city council people when Councilman Musket contacted me through email.
About this?
About the parks. He wanted to basically see if we can take the Vista Maria money and put it in the parks.
I didn't receive, so I don't know.
I did send an email back to everybody that was included, all the city council people, and I was very clear as far, that particular park does not fall in the low to moderate income area, and therefore, we cannot use city block, the block grant money for that.
Is there another, there is another park, though, or there is no park in the city at all there?
No, there isn't, and my email also, and I can resend the email, obviously, and I.
I didn't receive it, so I'd like to get it, please.
I don't know if anybody received it, I did send it back.
I didn't receive it either.
And I said.
She didn't get it, nobody got it.
The only place we can put the money in the park system right now is the ADA, and I think I.
And this, if I may, may I, because you're right, I mean, HUD money, you know this better than any of us, and Chris as well, Blunt Doc, it's, the HUD money has to be used in one of those silos, right? It has to be elderly, it has to be disabled or low to mod income, that ball diamond, and I would love to see that done, don't get me wrong, because it is needed, and we'll talk about other things we can do, hopefully, moving forward, but I don't think that money can be used for that, because it doesn't meet those requirements, unfortunately.
Right, so let's, let's.
So you can put it on the agenda, but again.
Then, but wait.
What we also have is small garbage cans, which does fall under the ADA.
Might need to put it on, but modify it, but work with the administration as well.
Madam Chair, I think Councilman Wunsel and I live closest to those ball diamonds, and we've been at them a lot, and they need some improvement. Vista Maria's been around for a long time, they do a lot of great things, and so that's, that's quite a decision to say we're not going to make our contribution to Vista Maria, which is in Dearborn Heights, and instead, improve this particular ball diamond. I was at the two meetings, and I've, we've, Tom and I have both coached in D7, and both, and, and, and there is room for improvement, but I don't know about diverting the fun, funds away from, from, how long have we?
We can, we've been doing it ever since I've been here, I know we've been doing it for quite a long time, and you know, back me up on this one, as far as Vista Maria. As far as the garbage cans that you're recommending, $5,000, that would be the same thing as when we discussed during our public hearing, the Nax boxes. The amount of paperwork that's involved in this, and the timetable that's required, is really a ridiculous amount of time. By the time, we're talking about next year's budget, not this year's budget, so it will be approximately, approximately maybe nine months to 12 months from now, till people can apply for these cans, and then whoever wants to receive them or house them at that point, will have to make sure that people are, they qualify from an income perspective, and they have to keep track of their tax returns and their paperwork, and it's for $5,000, so I'm not really sure if that's feasible at this point.
Councilman Bazey?
But, I mean, one of the things, I mean, we did argue on the first one, because of, you mentioned the disability, and a lot of senior citizens who are disabled, they cannot drag this huge bin to the sidewalk, so why is it, like, you can't do that with this one?
I didn't say we cannot, I said.
I'm talking about now, I mean, why, you mentioned all this paperwork, like, what paperwork do we have to do to take care of this disabled senior citizens who cannot drag that?
They, they can only qualify if they don't have enough income for, as far as the numbers that we have. So we have a table that shows low to moderate income households, so they have to qualify from that perspective. In order for you to qualify, you have to submit your tax returns, and somebody's got to keep track of this. If you're buying 500 garbage cans, for example, somebody's got to house those, somebody literally have to have a warehouse, we cannot put them in our building, and I'm sure you don't want them at City Hall. So the, the way that would work, it really is counterproductive at this point.
You're saying each individual would have to qualify on an individualistic basis? You'd have to vet resident by resident?
Yeah, whoever houses these cans, let's say DPW says we can put them in our warehouse, for example, and somebody else is going to check on the income, they would have to literally check your personal income, and then approve you, and keep track of these income documents for seven years, house them, in case you get audited, and it's for $5,000.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I was going to say, instead of going through the hoops related to community development block grant, there's HUD, well, I'm saying because of HUD requirements reported, is what I meant by that.
Sure.
So let me explain and elaborate on that. It would make sense to me, because what, what the problem is, is that we have residents, we're an aging community, we have senior citizens, we have those with disabilities, and we're hearing the challenges they face moving these trash canisters. So there's a couple of options, and, and one was the door to curb service that we're not going to do, but the other option is just budget, ask for it, you know, talk to the mayor and say, how about a budget consideration of $5,000 to purchase the smaller, smaller canisters, make them available to our residents for purchase, and store them at DPW yard.
Madam Chair, can I just point, I mean, just, just to put in perspective everything, and we're still have an open office, we do have door to curbside service, we are not advertising it, because everybody is coming out, and you do have to vet them, because there are some people that just don't want to. We do have door to curbside service, we're doing it now, we're not advertising as much as Dearborn is, because Dearborn's actually paying the additional, but GFL has offered that to us, and there's a limit on how many people we can have. So, right now, we have five residents that have signed up. In addition, oh, sorry, we have five residents that have door to curbside pickup, five.
So how do they get this, if they do?
They call the mayor's office, just like they do for anything else.
Do they show medical proof?
We are in the business of helping people that need help.
And in addition to that, they can get, they can get a smaller can if they just want a smaller can. There's some single people that just want a smaller can, there's no limits on them, and that's $65. If they're, if they're a senior citizen, if they have some disability, if they have a doctor's note, and we're not, we're not doing anything, it's a doctor's note, it doesn't matter what the doctor's note says, it's $35. There was six people last year that got them, that was having problems paying, two of them were put on payment plans, the other four I paid for, it's not a big deal, we have, we have ordered 100, we are not getting that. So if you are getting somebody that's complaining or having a concern about it, tell them to call the mayor's office, because we are not getting those calls. We, we, every person that we have helped, we have worked out, we, we're not getting those calls. We have ordered 100 smaller cans at the beginning of this, when we got GFL, on, with the condo association, we had to order a little bit more, but we have right now about 67 of them. We can't house them at the DPW, they're too bulky, we don't want them, we don't have enough room to store our equipment in the buildings, let alone these. We do have them in a GFL yard.
Madam Chair.
And when somebody calls, we deliver them.
And this is just for clarification on, for me, honestly, I'm just speaking, I know I'm not, I don't see the problem with the ones that we've got right now, because to me, with the wheels, it seems like it's, I haven't seen personally where it'd be that difficult to move the one with the barrel, the barrel with the wheels on it, whether it's the large one or the small one, it's, and I know, okay, I'm physically able, but still. They also have them, if I'm not mistaken, can you clarify for me, Chrissy, it's the same, they have the same exact ones in Dearborn, isn't that correct?
Yeah, the Dearborn, Dearborn has the same exact ones, they're, they're standard throughout.
But can a person get a smaller one if they wanted there, or whatever?
I don't know what their process is, Dearborn did pay for them by themselves, I think they had an initial thing to sign up. Some cities did, some cities didn't, but they're standard across.
And the other thing is, with the wheels, it's still going to be easier than taking out the original old school cans that people had to carry, so, to me, you know, if we're giving the residents that do want them access to it through the mayor's office.
Right.
So at this point, we'll just.
If we can clarify, though, there is a smaller canister available, and the cost, again, is?
$65, or 35 with the doctor's note.
Can they trade in their larger can and get a credit?
No, no, here's the problem with that, if they pay an extra one, that's theirs, but the house, I'm sorry, it's, the house belongs to the residents, not the resident, so when that person moves, the next resident comes in that residence and gets the standard can again, because that person that's coming in might not have the limitations that the other person did.
Understandable.
Same with larger families that have bought extra ones.
And then we'd have problems if a president came in and said, oh, the previous owner
opted out. Eight years ago.
And we don't know, so to keep it, we said, you got to keep the can somewhere in the garage, or wherever you keep it. We really, somebody came up with a solution for a problem I don't think exists. Quite frankly, we try to deal with the problems as people have come in.
And we just don't have that volume.
Okay, well, at this point, then I guess we'll just.
Once again, you need to check that the administration are there, and we'd be more than happy to inform people.
Motion on the floor, the motion was amended to move it to the next agenda.
Okay, now, all those in favor, say aye.
Second.
Is it a move now?
You have a motion in a second, so therefore, it's on the floor for a vote.
To move it to the next agenda, or?
The next agenda.
For studies, well, but, okay.
Maybe discuss it with me.
But CDBG already said we can't do it in regards to the, so unless you're going to find another source of money, but anyway, for clarification, I'm not against rehabbing the baseball field, that's fine, but I'm just saying, there's certain criteria that you got to follow, and it doesn't seem like that's possible.
From the block grant, we cannot use it for the parks. Of the garbage cans, whether you are disabled or not, you are not eligible.
Yes.
You're only eligible if you have low to moderate income.
Okay.
So Madam Chair, I'm going to amend one more time.
Okay.
And because there is discussion that people are interested in, but we know that we can't do it through community development block grant, and Ms. Laszlo shared some options with us, I move it to a study session, how does that sound? Sound good?
Is it an amended motion?
Madam Chair.
I'll second it.
We can discuss it. Councilman Bazey's second it. Um, any more discussion?
Joe, can, can this money be used for an organization? Could it be given to the Dads Club, and then you apply that money to the fields?
That particular money is for infrastructure, it has to be, you have to submit a request, which, that's long gone, that was January 14th, I think was the deadline, the money has to be done for infrastructure, so I can basically, if you don't want the money to go to Vista Maria, and that's, you can vote on that, I can send it to DPW, that's about the only department that can use that money. Everybody else is a service or administrative, they have caps on.
But if we move it to DPW, can we move it from DPW to the fields?
No.
No.
No, it would have to be for water main and low to moderate.
Let's move it to a study session.
There needs to be, it sounds like we need discussion, because, you know, there are some ground we need to discuss.
Yeah, we need to get.
And know what is actually eligible, because that's what the issue here is. Yes.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Madam Chair, so, maybe Director Grebel can share with us, we've just recently got new equipment at those fields, at Swapka Field, that will groom the field, and you're going to be adding some meal to the baseball fields to.
Yeah, we, we had a meeting at the districts up in Dads Club, they have their meetings on Sunday mornings, and, and in the discussions we had, we really came to the consensus that it was more of maintenance issues that we're having, and so I've already had planned and was well aware that the fields were low, and we're going to put some meal on, on each one, about 100 ton of, it's crushed limestone, it's what we use on ball diamonds, and we're all going to look at filling some of the, if there are some issues with the outfield, I was told at that meeting, this is the first I've heard of it, that there might be some unlevel areas where kids could, you know, trip and fall and whatnot, so we're going to go out and fill those all in. I mean, that park alone has had a lot of improvements over the years. We have new restrooms there with a concession, a new pavilion, new metal beaters on one of the ball diamonds, new scoreboard, we have a nice rec center there, we're going to be putting in two new tennis courts, and we're also, I'll be recommending very shortly, with our next Wayne County allotment, which we should get notice on very shortly, a new play structure. So, you know, the park has, has a lot in, in the park, so, but I, I think most of the issues that I heard there, there was a fence issue, that once again, is a maintenance issue, and that can be taken care of through the Parks and Recreation and the building and maintenance budgets, and that's how we're going to proceed this spring, and I think we can rectify a lot of the issues.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I think Gary has something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Gary, I didn't even see you.
Well, no, no, I'm sorry, I just saw the, the council secretary and the city clerk looking like they weren't quite sure, I could be wrong, maybe I missed.
I believe we're good.
Okay, all right, sorry.
We're good, thank you, thanks, sir. Thanks for noticing.
So we're going to move this to a study session? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, that motion is carried. Next, we have new business, business license renewal for Uncle Ray's Place and Fairline Eagles, number 3861.
Right, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
I move the city council approve the business license renewal applications as submitted in 13A.
Second, Councilman Bazey, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carried. Next, we're going to have comments from council members, I'd like to make, oh, go ahead. Oh, I was just going to say, we have the flag retirement day at the VFW La Scawa at 6828 North Waverly, there is a correction in the date, it was previously announced as April 17th, it is actually April 21st, which is a Saturday at 12:30. We ask if you have any old flags that you want to retire, please drop them off, or come join us, there will be food served. Also, too, we have the Berwin Open House, that is April 23rd, from 10 to 2, and we also, for the open house, you have to be 50 years old to qualify to belong to Berwin, which a lot of people don't realize you can be that young. Also, too, Eaton Center has their craft show on the 21st of April, at, from 9 to 3.
Madam Chair.
Mayor.
Had some news that I think is, I wanted to let everybody know, Gary Barakoff of D7 is the Senior of the Year in Dearborn Heights, and also is the recipient of the Margaret Whitehead State Senior Citizen Award, and we're just very pleased, Gary and his dedication, but also his wife Sharon, and the combination of the two of them have really given a lot of service, and so I thought we ought to recognize that.
Okay.
The other thing, the other thing I want to suggest is, we're a team here, you need to work with the administration, all of you, I'm, I and the department heads are there. You need to be more transparent, these add-ons without letting us know is not right.
Very understandable, and I know it goes both ways, because we've had you add-on at the last minute, too, a few, about a month ago, Jeff Mallett? He was the last man to add, I understand, I just got this, I thought it was supposed to be out earlier, too, but.
Well, I haven't had a chance to review 11B, but I may veto that.
That's fine.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Um, I wanted to mention that, of course, April is Volunteer Appreciation Month, and you're right, the Barakoff family has been wonderful with the D7 Dads Club, and I want to say thank you to all of our volunteers in our community, there are so many people that volunteer their personal time, their talent, their commitment to the community to make it a better place is amazing, that is everything from our parent organizations in our schools, to our service clubs, to the students, through National Honor Society and other organizations, do a fabulous job with the support, and it really does help our city overall. So thank you to all of those volunteers, and then I have an announcement on behalf of Crestwood High School Drama, they are presenting the Hunchback of Notre Dame on April 27th and 28th at 7:00 PM, and the following weekend, on May 3rd, 4th, and 5th at 7:00 PM, Crestwood High School is located at 1501 North Beach Daily, between Ford Road and Cherry Hill, and tickets are available by visiting crestwoodboxoffice@gmail.com. There's also, they're hosting, Crestwood Drama is hosting the 2018 Snack and Stroll, they want to let people know about that, that is Saturday, April 14th, so it's the Saturday coming up, and this is an opportunity to come shopping and support the drama organization, so stop by for something to eat, visit the vendor.
So stop by for something to eat, visit the vendors, the time is from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Admission is $2 and includes one door prize ticket. And that's going to be at Crestwood High School in the cafeteria. So that is for those folks. And then I wanted to revisit an item that the city council had approved on March 28th, 2017. This was the, through Parks and Recreation Department, the wheelchair swing set. And it was approved by the city council, and I have that information with me as well. But it was approved and budgeted in the 2016-17 Parks and Recreation Capital Outlay Budget. However, we have not seen any development there. I do know that we had received an email about question of liability, however, I wanted to add that while all playground equipment, you know, potentially there's liability with, as well as vandalism, but I know Director Gribble, all due respect, you had mentioned that we're experiencing more problems with litter than we are vandalism. And then I further researched it more and found out that even here in Michigan, Grand Rapids and Big Rapids have the same swing and have not had problems with their swings. And as well as the Michigan District of Kiwanis, one of their service projects that they're finding throughout the state of Michigan includes adding this type of swing. It's for wheelchair-bound individuals to use and be inclusive, an inclusive community. So I think it's really important that we, you know, support inclusiveness. And this was voted and approved by the city council. That's what I wanted to share, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Madam Chair. On March 31st, we, at Canfield, we had our Easter egg hunt. We had a good turnout despite the cold weather. And I'd like to thank especially Mark and Carol Slater for all the work they did. We're having some changes with our Kiwanis Club, so that may be the last Easter egg hunt for a while, but they did a great job. And then I'd also like to thank Gary and Sharon Barakoff and congratulate them for all the work they do for being, Gary being Senior of the Year and as Pat and Pete Stevens did before, the founders of the Dads Club, they, they invest a lot of their time and energy, so thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Nebella?
Just, this thought came to me earlier today, I want to commend two of our department heads. First was Mohamed Sob with the Polygon Engineering Department. Going around the city all day, I just, I just like the fact that he's helping keep the city in good condition as far as the housing, whatever he's concerned. Between him and of course, Ordnance, Jack with Ordnance. So I, I'd like to thank him for that because I go around a lot of different cities and ours is definitely one of the better kept cities. And also DPW Director Bill Zimmer. I don't know if the residents are noticing, I'm noticing, but a lot more of the sweepers going out on a regular basis, two of them back to back. And in addition to that, the Cold Patch guys and gals, I seen them today, they're out and about, you know, taking care of our streets. So I want to thank both, all three department heads for doing a great job. Thank you.
Any other announcements from council members?
Madam Chair.
Councilman-
I also would like to congratulate Gary Barakoff on his Senior of the Year Award. Gary's been involved with the Dearborn Heights Dads Club for over 40 years, active member, and doing an outstanding job for the youth of Dearborn Heights. And I'd also like to mention again, our 25th Annual E Course Creek Cleanup coming up on May 5th. If anyone has any questions about, about the event or would like to sponsor it, they can get ahold of me at Tom Winso, D H C C at gmail dot com. And there was talk about the baseball fields, there was an issue brought up about the trash being collected there. I talked to Director Bill Zimmer, TPW, and he told me that there would be a regular pickup of trash and a scheduled pickup, so we won't have that issue. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We open it up to announcements.
Hello, council chair and mayor, just wanted to talk about a couple of upcoming events. First off, Thursday, April 19th, at Carolyn Caddy Library, we will be hosting a program on cooking, an assortment of international dishes. Mary Spencer will instruct patrons on Italian panzanella bread, Hungarian chicken paprikish, and warm Indian rice pudding. Recipes and samples will be provided, registration appreciated, please call 313-791-3800. Also upcoming is the Spring Library Book Sale this week, Thursday, April 12th from 10:00 to 8:00 p.m. Friday, April 13th from 10:00 to 4:00, and Saturday, April 14th from 10:00 to 4:00 at Carolyn Caddy Library. Lots of special deals from the friend stores have been building up, come on out and do not miss any hidden gems. That's all for now, thanks for your time and see you at the library.
Thank you. Any other community announcements? Jack?
Chuck.
Chuck, yep.
I just wanted to remind all the residents that in terms of trash can placement, our ordinance requires that trash bins, trash cans not be viewed from the street. So recently, I got an online concern from a resident who submitted about 37 properties that while she was walking throughout the neighborhood, she saw that the cans were visible from the street, placed in different areas. So I did respond to her online, told her that we would be following up on those. Typically, our procedure is to first give someone a warning and then if necessary, we'd issue a ticket. Some of the challenges with that, that part of that ordinance is that, especially with folks that have attached garage, garages, it, it limits them to either putting them in the garage or entirely behind the garage. So we're working with some folks and, you know, trying to be as flexible as we can. The reason I bring it up is because the resident wasn't really satisfied with the response that I had given to her and so she reached out to at least one or two council members and now has, today called, or got in contact with our county commissioner. So I just want to reassure people that we are responding to things that are put online. Sometimes it takes a little longer than other situations to resolve those, but please continue to call us directly, it's the best way to get information to us. And I like, I prefer actually someone to call directly. The new phone system is dynamic, it directs you to all the officers that are, that are in the department, so you can pick which officer is in your area and you can, you know, get those, those questions answered directly. But again, sometimes it takes longer than others to get things resolved. We don't want to just be walking around giving tickets to anyone. One of the things I was particularly concerned was, it seemed like select houses were being chosen to be reported to me. When the officer did go out there, he had called back to me and he said, there's probably about 15 more on this block that were not on this list. So I, I want to be cautious about, I don't, I don't want it to be certain people that are, are being targeted for their garbage cans, that seems a little silly. So I wanted to say that and get that out of the way. But the ordinance does require that cans, trash cans and trash storage not be visible from the street if there was any question about that. And I just want to remind folks that this Thursday, or this Thursday of this week, we're having our open house from 2:00 to 4:00. And I remind people that Michigan Community Society is going to be here with about 10 to 15 animals that are available for adoption right here from City Hall, so we're pretty excited about that. Please come out, these, some of these are animals that have been in the shelter for a long time and they're just kind of getting passed by and they, some might be seniors. I know that there's some puppies that are coming as well, so hopefully we'll see you on Thursday.
How's Chuck doing?
Chuck is good, he has a follow-up appointment this weekend. He's applying pressure on all four paws, so that's, that's good, but we're still keeping him restricted in his mobility. But he's become much more vocal in City Hall now, he's hearing voices and he's, and he's barking appropriately, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to public comment, please state your name and address and limit your comment to three minutes, please.
Hi everyone, my name is Dana, I live on 8558 Salem Lane, and I have a comment slash question. So on Facebook, I know somebody posted on the community page about the possibility of starting a community garden. So I wanted to know, one, if we do have any community gardens in the city of Dearborn Heights? And then, two, if a group of people from the city want to do something like this, what are the proper steps we have to take and who do we have to work with to get that done?
Mayor?
I don't know off the top of my head.
But there's a problem with rats.
Yeah, we don't, we don't want to encourage rats.
Some of the, some of the private association groups have had some. I know in my neighborhood, we had one. It was real successful for the first year and then people lost interest and then unfortunately the responsibility fell on the owner of the vacant lot that had allowed us to use it. One of the reasons we are discouraging those is because we have particular areas of the city where we're experiencing a problem with rodents. So we're actually asking, in some cases, when we're doing vector control, we're actually asking some residents if, asking them to postpone having an outside garden until we get the situation under control in terms of rodent, rodent control and vector control. So at this point, we don't have any, we don't have any that are city managed or city owned. There are some private ones, but that's, that's probably how you would have to do that, start off in your, your own little neighborhood and, and see what you can organize.
We do have rain gardens.
Yeah, we do have the rain gardens that are located over by the Richard A. Young Center.
Right behind the Richard Young Center. And then I know Allen Park used to have a garden right behind their City Hall, I don't think they have it anymore.
Is that something you're looking for in your neighborhood, a garden, because they mentioned the Richard A. Young Center, rain gardens. On the day of the E Course Creek Cleanup, we also do a day-long maintenance of those and we need as much help as possible on those. And probably to answer your question, in your neighborhood, you'd probably have to find a vacant property and contact City Hall, see if it's available and go from there.
Okay, so I guess if I'm understanding correctly, the only way I could go about doing this would be in a private manner? Like looking for a vacant lot and then calling City Hall and seeing if it's available and then building it from there? Wouldn't those, those-
No, you mean you'd have to contact the private homeowner directly?
Wouldn't the issue of rodents still be applicable though?
Yes, it would. The only, the only advantage to having it done privately in like your association or in your private community is that you'd probably get more of a commitment in terms of people that would monitor it. But I can tell you, we had a really active neighborhood association, huge. It was a great idea, people were all very excited about it at the beginning, everyone was on board. And then within a year's time, it just kind of dwindled out. And then finally, at the end, the owner of the property that donated us the property, she said, I'm just going to have to shut this down because it's too much work for me, so. But I would, I personally would start privately amongst, you know, your neighbors and see if there's any extra property that way and see how it goes. Maybe start off something smaller and a little more controlled, maybe with some boxes that are raised off the ground.
Or maybe the school district, I mean, see what they have available too. And then that way it could be a student project, possibly, there may be some avenues there.
I know U of M had one for a while, I don't know if they still have it, you know?
U of M Dearborn, where the EIC built, I don't think we do have one anymore. I think they usually die out by themselves and I don't know why, because they're really cool and beneficial and I feel like we could get a lot of, like, kids in the community involved in like how to grow their own plants and like how to be healthy, being outside, it's really cool. I feel like I would have loved that when I was younger, I wouldn't be looking like this, no kidding. But, okay, so thank you guys.
Thank you again. Any other comments?